Good morning, everyone. I'm calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the Chair of this committee and I'm joined today by councilmembers Reich, Bender, Andrew Johnson, Quincy Goodman-Frye, and Palmasano. We are quorum of the committee. We have three items on the committee for today. The first is a consent item. It is the annual report of the Minneapolis Clean Energy Partnership, the first annual report. And I'll just note that this was fully presented in the H E C E committee earlier this cycle. And there is a lot of great information that folks can review about the report online. And I'm sure if you would like a personal briefing, staff would be happy to accommodate you. So we will receive and file that item. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that is approved. We have been joined by councilmember Warsami. Next, we have the first of two discussion items. And our item number two on the agenda is the 2015 Minneapolis Creative Index Report.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Gulgun Kam. I'm the Director of Arts, Culture, and the Creative Economy. I work in the Coordinator's Office. And I'm pleased to be presenting to you the update of the Minneapolis Creative Index. This is our second report. With me is Rachel Eng. Rachel now works for Metris Arts, and it's an economic research specialist based in Pennsylvania. Rachel.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Rachel will be co-presenting key data points in the report with me, so we're going to share the podium. Are we ready, Rachel?
Yes.
Great. So, I want to spend a little bit of time before we go into the key data points of the report to talk a bit about the process. The report was developed in 2013. So the structure and the baseline data was acquired in 2013. The West staff was the organization we approached. It's an organization that has been used by a number of cities to develop their creative economy indexes. West staff is Western States Arts Federation. And so, again, this year, we have C V I data, the Creative Vitality Index data, in the report. Noon this year, we also added Economic Modeling Specialist International data, which is acquired by CPED Long Range Planning to augment the data from West staff. And the reason we did this is because we wanted, this year, to look at demographics within the creative sector. And E M S I data allows us to look at 100 different sources for this data. And we're really pleased to be able to work with CPED in this important aspect. So, and we also have a narrative section to this report. As in last year, we did have a narrative section. This year, we tied it very closely to the hard data that we were able to acquire. So our narrative section adds a robust qualitative element to the report. And as, as I mentioned, the report and this reliable data allows us to provide a framework for conceptualizing and understanding the creative economy. It helps educate art stakeholders and helps them build strategies and policies to strengthen the creative sector. It tracks and compares the creative economy regionally and nationally, and helps us understand how the creative sector is a driver of economic growth, and also helps the city be a leader in examining some of the aspects of the creative sector. Moving on, as I mentioned, we, as in 2013, we had two committees again this year. One focused on the quantitative data and the other focused on the qualitative data. We had representations from CPED Long Range Planning, Economic Development. We had representatives from councilmembers and the mayor's office. We also had stakeholders within the community who are interested in this aspect of the creative economy. We had Twin Cities list, their creative placemaking specialists, members of the Northeast Minneapolis Arts Association, University of Minnesota Center for Urban and Regional Affairs, Minneapolis Arts Commission members, and also Creative Community Builders, which is a local and nationally highly regarded organization in planning for creative sector. So our process, as I mentioned, has historically included these stakeholders, and we traditionally build the report to incorporate their expertise and interests into our findings. So we work with this team because we consider them our users. I'm going to move it over now to Rachel, who will be talking more about the data and helping you understand some of the key elements.
Great, thank you, Gulgun. So I will go over some of the key findings that we included in this year's report. And we're excited to share that there's a lot of good news. We're still kicking it out of the ballpark in terms of creative sales and creative occupations in Minneapolis. First, the sales. Creative sales pumped over $4.5 billion into the Minneapolis economy. That's 5.5% of all industry sales in Minneapolis, and nearly eight times the size of the sports sector revenues in Minneapolis. As you can see from this graph, the top performing industry was publishing, with over $1 billion in sales. Within publishing, software made up nearly half of these sales. Advertising came in second. Design was third. Onto creative jobs. So the main point here is that creative jobs have grown 10.4% since 2006. This is a greater growth than Minneapolis jobs as a whole, which grew 7.2% over that time. This graph shows, in green, the creative occupation change since 2006, and in brown, all occupations. The city boasts nearly 21,000 creative jobs, which is 4.8% of all workers in the city. And it's striking to us that that's a higher percentage than when we look at the nation as a whole. 2.8% of all workers in the nation are creative. So we have a higher concentration of creative workers when we look at the nation. How we measure up. The Minneapolis metro area boasts the overwhelming majority of Minnesota's creative jobs, 75%. And the city of Minneapolis holds over a quarter of all creative jobs in Minnesota. We thought it was interesting that this year, we found, when looking at the ZIP code level, high concentrations of creative workers in the southwest and the southeast parts of Minneapolis. On the right side of the screen shows the Creative Vitality Index values of the 35 most populous metro areas in the U.S. And the C V I value is calculated by looking at per capita revenues of arts-related goods and services, so industry sales, nonprofit revenues, and per capita occupational employment in the arts. So looking at that data together, there's an index number that we receive, and then we can compare each other, ourselves, our metro area, to other metros in the U.S. And we are, again, sixth. We were sixth in 2013 as well of the 35 most populous metro areas. So strong creative industry sales and growth in creative occupations continue to place us high on that list. So, so that was the good news, creative sales, creative occupations. Now for some sobering news. As Gulgun talked about before, we, the Arts, Culture, and the Creative Economy Program did the creative city roadmap planning process, or is in the process of wrapping that up. And one of the questions asked during that process was, there's so much arts and culture in Minneapolis, is everyone benefiting from this abundance? And through that research for the planning process, we really found that, no, not everyone is benefiting equally when we looked at the data, when we parsed it out by white people and people of color, men and women. So we really wanted to take the research we did during the planning process and look at hard numbers, hard data for creative workers in Minneapolis, in the metro area. So this graph here, we know that it's complicated, and it looks very small on the screen, but this is workers of color in creative occupations in the metro area. That was the smallest geographic area that we could, could get data for. And basically, the larger the bubble, the more jobs in the occupation. So each bubble is an occupation, is a creative occupation. Where the bubble falls on the X-axis shows the percentage of jobs in this occupation that belong to people of color. So the farther along the right side of the X-axis, the higher percentage of people of color in that creative occupation. And then the Y-axis tells the median hourly income for the occupation. It's not, it's for all people in that occupation. You'll also see here a vertical line at 14%. 14% of all metro workers are people of color. And we found through our data, our research here, that only 9% of creative workers of color in the metro area, I'm sorry, creative workers of color in the metro area are people of color. So we are under, people of color are underrepresented in creative jobs compared to all jobs at the metro level. The median hourly wage at the metro level is $22.48. So there's a line, a horizontal line there. Occupations that fall below the line make less than the median wage at the metro level. So this graph is especially striking as we look at the next graph, which shows women in creative occupations in the metro area. Again, it's set up the same as the previous graph. The X-axis is now the percent of women in creative occupations. We can see that it's much more, so 48% of all metro workers are women. 49% of creative workers in the metro are women. So compared to workers of color, there's much closer, women are much closer there. And so, and also, we wanted to note that, look at all the bubbles that are below that median metro median wage. So a lot of creative jobs have hourly wages that are below that metro median. I'm now going to turn it over to Gulgun.
Thank you, Rachel. One thing that Rachel forgot to mention is that when it comes to national averages in creative workers, Minneapolis also falls short. So 17% of all creative workers are workers of color. And again, ours, our data shows 9%. So this is something to take note of. While we have a strong concentration of workers, that's not representative, especially among artists of color. This particular graph is based on research that we did in 2013, utilizing data from the Urban Institute and research done by Maria Rosario Jackson, really looking at what do you need for a creative ecology to be healthy? What kinds of aspects do you need to be present? And we tried to map this out to show that the creative sector is actually an ecology of activity, where artists are at the center of that. These are the people that are the makers. They make the objects. They make, they're the people with the skills that do that. And through that making, they encourage economic and social engagement. They sell their products, but they also engage people socially. And in order for those makers to have a healthy environment to be successful, they need two additional elements. They need art service organizations, which are the inner ring. Those organizations help build the audience for their work. They help them build technical skills. They help them re-granting and bring resources to help these people develop. And then the next ring, which are the education. They need education in order to be successful. So they need training. They need to build their skills. They also perform in education. They teach. So these three elements, the presence of workers, the presence of art service organizations, and the presence of education are important in order for all the other aspects of our creative ecology to remain successful. And those other aspects include creative industries like architecture. They include all kinds of cross-sector activities, includes tourism. So all these other elements. So one thing, the reason I'm bringing this up now is we did some qualitative interviews. Again, we had done some, had some conversations with artists in the creative city roadmap planning process, and learned that the two communities, two different approaches and information we were getting about what do you need to be successful in your work, was communities of color were telling us about their lack of income, whereas artists who are white were saying really need more connections and more networking. So we wanted to ask questions specifically of those artists and creative workers in industries like architecture, design, media, production. These are the higher level, but good occupations. And in those interviews, we learned that, that there are systemic deficiencies in Minneapolis, that in the area of concentration of artists of color, we are not performing well. So that particular core isn't present. And then also, we learned that, so there's definitive data to tell us that. But we also learned through the interviews that those other two elements are also up for question. We don't have definitive data to support that. But they told us that raising awareness about the field inequities is a very important aspect, and so that we consider the index as part of that raising awareness. That organizing and learning from peers and mentors is important for creative workers to be successful. That cultivating places where young people of color can engage in hands-on learning from people who look like them is also important. That systemic change around education and important players such as foundations and institutions that provide support for these organizers, for these artists, is also important. So as we know that Minneapolis demographics are changing, and more people of color are living and working here, and if our arts service organization and arts educational institutions aren't serving these communities, then they may not be able to have the same opportunities as others who are supported by these parts of the creative ecology. So people of color and women need to have places to get support, where they can learn from people who look like them. And this is the way we can ensure that women and people of color have opportunities to thrive in creative occupations in Minneapolis. And we spent a little bit of time thinking about roles for the city. We think that the Creative Index helps us raise awareness, and we're building a communications plan to continue to do that and distribute it in the metro area. We are working, Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Program is working to build relationships and new programming that builds technical skills for artists, an ATAB, if you wish, something like that. So, and working directly with those organizations led by and that serve people of color, so that we can create a direct pipeline into those communities. And then we could also act as a convener with key stakeholders, such as foundations, community organizations, city staff, to discuss the needed systemic changes and bring them before you as recommendations on how we can move forward. Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. I am happy to stand for questions, if there are any from the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Bender has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wondered how we're doing, or if you heard from artists, about the spaces that artists and makers need to do their work, whether it be the affordability of spaces or the availability of spaces in our city.
So this particular report doesn't address the issue of spaces, but we do have important information coming forward in the Creative City Roadmap around spaces. And to answer that question, it's a yes, that spaces are needed. And through a number of, again, interviews and data gathered, we have a lack of spaces for these artists and creative workers. So I'll be bringing that before council next month.
And I will also add that one of our interviewees in the report, a producer, he talked about the lack of spaces, especially for young people in North Minneapolis, around learning how to produce and direct. So that is one part of the report.
Council President Johnson.
I think, I'm just looking at roles for the city in this pilot new programming, what that builds technical and business skills for artists. What are we thinking along those lines that we, that we would develop?
Yeah, this could be an opportunity for us to work with Economic Development and their B T A B programs, to see if it's getting to creative workers. And if it's not, to look at how we can make sure that creative workers have access to that, those kinds of resources. So currently, the innovation team in the Coordinator's Office is working collaboratively with the B T A B program, and we will be looking at those results and talking to the staff in Economic Development to see how those programs reach, and if they reach, artists and creative workers of color. There are some additional programs in the metro area that are led by an organization called Springboard for the Arts. But based on our research, these, this information is not getting to those artists that need it, especially those artists of color. So we're really looking at the pipeline. Is there, is there a pipeline that's getting information, technical skills, business skills, how to write a resume that's successful, how to write a grant that's successful, where to put your work and product placement, all that kind of stuff? Really, we're looking at that to help individuals be successful.
When, when you mentioned production space and that kind of thing, I mean, one of the things that we are involved with is MTN, and they have really great capacity and great equipment. And I think it's kind of an underutilized opportunity for, for young people to, particularly young people, to learn those kind of skills.
That's an excellent point.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. It's always great to see this data. It really says that we take this seriously, and the numbers sort of underscore that this is a serious part of our economy. I mean, it's a significant amount of economic activity that we have now quantified in direct relation. And I think it'd be reasonable from that to expatiate sort of residual benefits that probably go well beyond that in terms of the numerical dollar impact for Minneapolis economy. But there's a softer side to this, too, that is becoming very apparent with Meet Minneapolis looking at its strategies around getting tourism, and knowing that this is not just an important part of our economic environment and vitality, it's really a defining feature. But to utilize that defining feature in the abstract is probably not so useful. But to have these strategies through a report like this, I think will be useful, to have concrete sort of strategies around how do we take advantage of, for purposes of our Meet Minneapolis goals, with this particular and unique defining feature of Minneapolis, to make it more strategic and real and beneficial, I suppose, at the end, versus we've got this cool thing, and we'll talk about it, and maybe that'll work. This kind of takes it to another level. And in terms of, you know, this connection with, say, you know, our community colleges and colleges, who have these incredible programs and incredible resources, the bridge traditionally was arts in the schools, elementary, junior high, high school, and not just sort of for special kids in a magnet school or a special program. It was there for everyone. It was a part of the curriculum. And I think we are slowly building back that, but it's sort of spotty. It needs to be a consistent platform if we're going to see more of the equity element and making those connections. I think to excuse ourselves from that, that logical connection is to really sort of swing our fists in the air in futility. So we're not the school board, but I think we're all leaders in the community, and we can start to emphasize the importance of that aspect of it in all our, all our neighborhood schools. Thanks.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the presentation. I particularly like the second bullet point around what we can do to help with the business and technical skills. When I think of the artists and the makers, you know, even just getting them on the platforms like Etsy, great example, where the makers that I know that are on there are just swamped with business, just tons and tons of business, and they're able to ultimately do what they love full-time because of platforms like that. So being able to build those technical skills. Other thing I think of, too, is all these great shops that we have with local merchandise, and if we were able to host some sort of kind of an expo, if you will, for makers who are interested in being in a retail environment, so that they can, and then actually communicating out to these different retail stores and letting them know that we're doing this, so that, and maybe we do it in partnerships, so it's not city-sponsored, but it's through an arts organization that they help put this on, but that we can have the different retailers around the area come and actually interact with the makers, see their products, and talk about what they see for their vision in terms of growing, and what it would take to get them on the shelves if they like their products. So I appreciate all the support that we have for artists and what opportunities we have to further that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I certainly appreciate the report. It's good to see this information coming forward, and there's so many details to dig through. I was very interested in seeing the incomes and actually how much people were making on that. I think this is a kind of a new aspect of the report. And it was, it's also concerning that so many, so many artists or people involved in the creative arts are falling below what the median hourly wage is. And as I was looking at some of those circles, it struck me that probably a lot of these people actually have other jobs that are really making a living off it. And I was curious, and I don't know that we have this information, we probably don't, but I was just curious about the percentage of artists that are actually making a living and providing for themselves and their families off their creative artwork, as opposed to those who are doing, struggling to either get there or because it fits into their life to be a part-time artist and to sell some things sometimes. And if we think the $22 an hour is where that line is, or it probably isn't, but how much do we know about that?
Councilmember Gordon, I don't have that information to hand, but I believe that that research has been done a few years ago, looking at the percentage of creative workers that are in fact making a living. So I'm happy to get back to you with that information. And maybe I should ask also Rachel, who does this research nationally, have you, are you aware, do you have those numbers?
Well, yeah, we can think about how we can better answer that question. I think one of the benefits of using the data that we have from our data provider is that it's not just full-time, year-round workers. We're capturing those, those people who work part-time as artists. So it does get complicated. But yeah, we're happy to look for other research that answers that question.
We can also imagine what a living wage is and draw the line there if we want, at 15 or somewhere, and see it ourselves, too.
Correct. And the feature of the creative sector, Councilmember Gordon, that Rachel indicated about multiple income streams is one aspect. The other feature is the fact that the reason people need to do this is because they are earning below the median for the metro area. So it's imperative on people to sort of find ways to continue to make a living. And so that, you know, it's a, it's a chicken or egg question situation, in a way. If we, if we had a conversation with those people who do have full-time jobs, or those providers of full-time jobs in the metro area, and talk about how can we raise these, or encourage people to raise these salaries, so that people can actually sustain themselves on it, then, then that may change the way in which we get our data.
And it also may be that some people really like it as a part-time vocation, and sometimes they're able to make some money off of their art, and that's great. Partly, I think we all could be artists in our own way, and should be creative in expressing ourselves that way. And when you make that switch from doing it as a hobby or for no pay to getting some kind of audiences or pay, it's a, it's a switch. So I don't, I don't want to say that just because you're doing it part-time and you're not making a living wage, you shouldn't keep doing it more and enjoy doing it, and we all should be doing it.
One thing to note also, Councilmember, is that these aren't just dancers and painters. This is also technical workers. These are people with jobs in fields such as media, software. So this is, these are jobs that, in fields, that are, you know, should be producing higher wages, not just the individual person creatively making something on the side. So just to note, when you look at those occupations, to note that we look at a broad cross-section of for-profit and nonprofit activities. We make sure we capture all of those.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. I was going to put myself in queue, and I might be the last person here. So I will say, I was going to ask a question, but I actually found the answer, and I'll maybe just say what it was, because I found the answer kind of interesting. So you had given us this statistic on the create, the high percentage of job growth within creative occupations, and especially compared to all occupations. And I, I found that interesting, and I had this assumption really in my head that that was maybe due to advertising industry or things like that, because that's encompassed in the report. And it says right here that the occupations that had the most growth were agents, sound engineering technicians, and actors. And I will tell you, that was just not my assumption at all. I don't know if you have any comment on what you think is going on in Minneapolis that would produce those other jobs. Maybe we just have an increase in, in shows. I, I don't know, so.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Glidden. One thing, I cannot answer that definitively. I will, I will defer to Rachel if she has a definitive answer. But I have been looking at data nationally about our theater industry here. And we have a high concentration of actors in our community. In fact, theater, if you look at nonprofit revenues, is one of the top performing nonprofit areas. So it doesn't come as a surprise to me. There's a, there is a relationship between film and theater. So often, theater artists will also be seeking their jobs through film. So advertising, and in that regard, could be contributing to the presence of more actors. Again, these are all hypothetical on my part, not definitive, but those are some of my observations, having, you know, having a background in theater. But Rachel, could you add anything to that?
Just that we saw a lot of occupations that grew, and, you know, that 13, 11%, those were the kind of highest ones, but there were quite a few around that area. So.
All right. Thank you. And then I just, I note that you have as one of your listed roles for the city here, some additional work with key stakeholders. some additional work with key stakeholders on next steps. And just, I actually really wanted to echo Councilmember Reich's comments about, and this hole that's developed in the pipeline, which is our school system. And I know there's a lot of bigger issues at play here that have to do with funding and pressures around what you need that educational system to do. But that, this year, I just, I had the opportunity, and I know a lot of my colleagues volunteer in the schools, and because I have a music background, I volunteered around our strings program. And it just, you know, that, that is a place where without my help, they wouldn't have had someone with strings experience and they would have had someone who had general band and orchestral experience. And it is a big hole and a big need and it's kind of that one opportunity to excite students on the early end. So, you know, I think we all really feel this hole and hope that there are, we can find better ways to address it. And maybe that's a topic for some of your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn. And as you observed, it's, it's, it is important that students get exposed, not just to help them decide if they want to be musicians, but also actually to create our educated audiences. So we know that the majority of students will not go on to become musicians. They will become to, they will go on to be appreciative audiences, which is an important part of our creative ecology. We need the consumers, not just the producers, here to create a vibrant and active ecology. So yes, the, the issue around education is an important one and that is something that we will continue to pursue. Thank you.
So thank you. I'm not seeing other questions. I believe our action here is receiving and filing and just double-checked in here. So we, I will move to receive and file the Minneapolis Creative Index 2015 report. And thank you very, very much for that presentation.